Good morning, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court. This is the fifth day of December 2013 at 8:30. As we do all meetings, we'll start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll ask Commissioner Benavides to lead us in the pledge with the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. Please rise, everyone.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First item, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Judge, I would like to send our deepest condolences to the Garza family from San Benito. Dr. Garza passed away, I believe, last week, and he was our county jail physician for some time, and of course, everybody knows about his wonderful track record as a citizen of San Benito and the Valley. So, we send our condolences.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just to follow up on that, you know, his services are Friday night, there's a rosary at 7:00 PM at Our Lady Quin of the Universe, which is on North Sam Houston in San Benito, and the funeral services at the same church are Saturday at 11:00 AM in the morning. So, I've made some comments at our last meeting about Dr. Garza, you know, and I will make them again, but I know he served this county, as Commissioner said, as a jail physician. What a lot of people don't know is that he served this county as, you know, he held the juvenile department for many years. But I think, you know, one of the things that is and was really critical to us is, you know, he was one of the first physicians that allowed and embraced the indigent healthcare program that Cameron County had, and he was one of those physicians that took the program, and there was never a gap in his services provided to the recipients. We always ran out of money six months or eight months into the year. People had gaps in healthcare delivery because the doctors would not continue serving them, and he never quit serving. He'd serve his patients year-round, and this went on from the totally non-funded times till he retired, you know. So, he gave to those most in need, and I think his own comment that he made at the opening of the school, when, you know, the school was named after him in San Benito, was that, you know, he kind of liked serving people without the bureaucratic, in other words, you serve them regardless of what they can afford, you just take care of them. And that was pretty much his philosophy, you know. But he was a great friend, you know. For me, I met Dr. Garza in February of 1976 is when we became friends, and then we practiced, I had my pharmacy down the street from him for 30 years, down, you know, like less than a block away from him. So, that friendship continued for many, many years, and it did till his last days, you know. And, you know, it's a great loss, but a great life lived. I think that's what we need to remember. If most of us could be 10% as good as he was, I think we'd have a much better world to live in.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Consent items. I've been asked to pull AA. Any other items to be pulled?
To table it or pull it?
Pull it. David, do you want to discuss that one, correct?
Yes.
None?
If no, if not, I need a...
One?
I'm sorry.
Chuck is looking for it.
Okay. Two F? Item F? Would that be all? Item F and double A, correct? Okay. I need a motion to approve all the consent items on item two, pulling except for double A and number F. I will motion second to pull, I mean to approve. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. F, item F?
On item F, we wanted to clarify the way the backup is, the information is shown there.
Okay.
Now, this is a service agreement from Motorola, and the paperwork that they sent shows the full amount. We're only going to be paying annually one-sixth of that, and so it's a little bit confusing. At the top of the document, it does say annual, but that's not the amount we're paying. We're only, we're not paying 260, 254,000, we're paying one-sixth of that.
Is everything working well?
Yes, sir.
That's great.
Everything's doing good.
Move to approve the agreement with the notation somewhere on it that says we are encumbering one-sixth of that amount.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item double A. Consideration authorization to add the evaluation committee for the following. Item A, indirect cost rate study, jail study. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Morning, Mike. How are you?
Judge, pro temp, commissioners, on this item, initially, we did look at the committee for this proposal. They were opened on Tuesday. Would be, in addition to the standing committee, Martha Galarza would replace Javier Vareal, and Mike Leonard would also serve on the committee. Since then, as you can see in the email, his request is to not serve on the committee, so we need direction from the court. No reason given.
No, but the requested what?
Not to serve on the committee.
That would be Mr. Leonard?
For Mike. Uh-huh. Mike Leonard.
So, who would be on it? Just you and, and we will be the committee members?
It would be David Garcia, Charles Hoskins, Martha Galarza.
Right. Why would Mike not want to be there? He's... Maybe he doesn't have time?
He didn't give a reason. I know the last time we did this, he was on the committee.
He was not?
He was.
He was.
I know that I did reach out to him when we were working, when Mike Leonard was working on getting the specs, and there was language inserted that where he was requesting how the study be done. So, we did reach out to him, and we did get information.
So, he did get his input in there?
He did get his input in how the RFP was going to go up, yes.
Okay.
Well, if we leave him in there and he doesn't show up, that's okay, right?
That's true.
I'd like to leave him in there, you know, because if he especially was part of the crafting of that RFP, it would probably be helpful if you could reach out to him at the minimum.
The item reads to add to the evaluation committee, so we're actually trying, you're trying to take somebody off, correct?
Martha for Javier.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. We're changing you for Javier? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay. With those changes, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve this item. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Action items. As soon as I can get to them. Item A, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules.
Judge, pro temp, commissioners, you have the budget amendments in front of you. The first one is for the county clerk. You have one for the district clerks, also for, I'm sorry, for the district courts, and then you have elections, indigent and autopsies. We're moving the money from medical and dental to contractual for the contractual services. The sheriff's department, the historical committee, planning and inspections, hyde task force, and for the health department. On the last one, for county court at Law III, that is the adjustment on the salary that the court approved at the prior meeting for the court interpreter. And on the salary schedules, you have the salary schedule reflecting the adjustment to the court interpreter position, and then also the salary schedule for the health department relative to the budget amendment that is proposed before you.
Your recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of claims?
Claims are warrants number 312256 through 3122449, warrants number 312454 through 312581, payroll for $1,687,026.88, and additional payroll that was placed in front of you for $721.22, Caremark health claims for $118,452.33, and a manual that we would run later on today to pay $66,576.33. This is to Spectracite, and this is on the tower rentals. This is an agenda item that you just approved, so the invoice date on that is on October the 29th, but the invoice was misrouted, and we're already at the 30-day date to, for the due date on this invoice. I have warrants number 306619 to be voided, and warrant number 309286 voided as well.
Your recommendation?
For approval, please.
For approval? Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need an approval for minutes, September 12th and 26th.
I'd like to ask to table those.
All of them?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion second to table the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, consideration possible approval of addendum to consulting agreement with RWL Group.
Good morning, Judge Pro Tem.
Good morning.
Commissioners. This was on the last regular meeting. We, I believe Commissioner Son just had a couple of questions. We've met with them over the phone, and the reason, one of his questions was the increase in the, I guess, the price. It went up from $917 to $1,400, and if you look at item number one, two, three, and eight, those are additional services that they're going to be providing for us, and that's one part of the reason for the increase. The second question he had was in reference to the tasks taking longer than two hours. What would happen in that situation? In meeting with them, they let us know that anything that cannot be solved or handled within two hours is probably more of a long-term type of project, and they would like to negotiate with us a cost for that particular project that's more, I guess, cost-effective for us and for them. So, those are the two.
What were the items again? There were the additions?
One, two, three, and eight.
Do you agree with this?
Normally, it's questions asked, right?
Right.
You know, it's not like...
Right, and if it's, yeah, it's questions asked, and it's going to take not longer than two hours to handle that, that particular question, and they would rather us work on something aside from, from, from what's...
Have we ever had something that takes longer than two hours?
Not that I'm aware of.
You know, I mean, it's just a protection for them.
All right. Hold on to the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Benavides, a second by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, consideration approval to develop, advertise, and accept sealed bids for the old Harlingen Annex Building at 608 East Harrison Avenue in Harlingen, Texas.
Judge, pro temp, commissioners, good morning. Recently, we've had a few folks interested in the old Harlingen Annex Building, and so this agenda item will allow us to accept bids. I think we've done this before through a broker, and we had no success with that, but hopefully with this bid process, we'll be able to get some of those folks that are seeking interest to extend a bid to the county for the building, and so we'd like to get approval on this.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Item F?
We're not tied to bids if we don't wish to award them, right?
No, we're not.
I mean, this is just exploratory.
This would be a sealed bid, and if, you know, whoever submits bids...
I can express it.
Got it.
And this bypasses the professional that we had onboard to try it?
Well, he's, his, his...
I think the contract has expired.
Oh, okay.
We've tried to sell this piece of property for...
For some time.
Some time, yes.
Item F, consideration authorization to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Rio Hondo for the reconstruction of Bates Street from Reynolds Street to Robertson Street.
Yes, sir. Judge, pro temp, commissioners, we've got it in the local, I think you have it in your backup. We made a slight change to it. We added a number eight recommendation from legal to add, any payments made under this agreement will be made from the current revenues of the paying party, and I don't believe the city of Rio Hondo will have a problem with this. They're looking to get the county's help on this road, and it'll help because this road is a road that's heavily traveled with trucks that are coming off of the Port of Harlingen area and into some gas areas in the vicinity. I'm not sure if the mayor of Rio Honda is here, but we recommend approval as well.
Now, we've had numerous meetings, and the county was going to do its road, but about a fourth of that road is inside the city limits. So, you know, we reached out to them, and they were more than willing to help with this, so I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, consideration authorization to fund 2013-2014 road and bridge equipment list. Again?
It's the same business, right? It didn't change from yesterday.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides. Discussion? I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You, the lion's share went to the precincts, huh? No other equipment needs?
I'm sorry?
Are there any other?
Well, this is just for the road and bridge. Yes, sir, public works.
Okay. When do we do the one for our general?
We are going to try to do that in the next meeting on the 19th. Hopefully, we'll have it ready, if not, the following meeting, but...
But all the money did not go to the public works, okay?
There's a, just for the record, there's about $700,000 available for equipment, and it's going to be pretty much all used, $698,000.
Okay. I have a motion second to approve this item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to skip item H. Item I, consideration possible action regarding the installation of a streetlight in the subdivision development within the county of Cameron. That's the one that we approved a couple of weeks ago for Cameron Park, but we didn't have the right verbiage for that particular item, and I was requested to put it back on the agenda properly.
This one, no, this is separate.
No, no, this is separate.
This is for all new subdivisions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm going ahead.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. Are we talking about this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning. We're bringing, in your packet of information, there's a copy of the final draft for installation of streetlights on proposed and existing subdivisions. We're bringing it back. We discussed it already before. We kind of made a few changes. This is the final draft. We wanted to bring it back one more time to the court, make sure that you all have a chance to look at it one more time. All the provisions are there for, like I said, for existing and proposed new subdivisions. There's provisions there for installation, operation, and maintenance, and like I said, it's a pretty straightforward order. I think we mentioned before that we had that discussion with developers, and pretty much a consensus was that they could work with that. So, the next step, I recommend to approve, the next step that will happen is that we'll put a advertisement for a public hearing, and then bring the two orders back simultaneously. Will be the order for the pedestrian lane order and the streetlight order, all hopefully within the next meeting or two. So, if there's no questions, I recommend to approve.
Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item J, consideration authorization to advertise for bids for the lease of land at the Port Isabel Cameron County Airport.
Yeah, we got it.
Yes. Thank you.
Good mayor, good morning, Judge Pro Tem, commissioners. Yes, there's currently a company using airport property to operate a lighting detection equipment at the airport. They've been using the property since 2001, and I guess in 2001, we executed an agreement with them, but the agreement never got renewed. So, but they've been paying, they've been paying the auditor's office every year since 2001. I spoke to legal, and legal recommended for us to go out for bids on this property, and I, and hopefully execute a long-term lease with them, with whoever.
Mr. Rega, would you tell the court what they use the equipment for, just so that they'll be familiar with what's occurring?
Yes. What they do, they have lighting detection equipments throughout the whole United States, and here at the airport, this lighting detection equipment detects the lighting that occurs around the Texas Gulf Coast, and from that, and then they use that information and provide that information to the National Weather Services.
And they've been there since, and without a contract, they've been paying us their yearly fee since. So, we have not had a...
And we're really doing this so that we can give them a long-term lease, and we will follow the proper channels.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K?
Judge Pro Tem, can we table this item, please?
Table?
Table?
Yes.
Need a motion to table this.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, a second by Commissioner Benavides.
Why do we want to table this?
We're going to put this back on next, the next regular meeting for executive session. We've talked with the district attorney, and he believes that's proper to do so as well, so we just feel that it would be better discussed, and there's some legal issues that have come up, and we just feel that it should be discussed in closed session.
You're going to give people hope that the Eight Niners are coming back?
Well, you know, we have some, you know, concerns, and so does the district attorney that we just...
How about suspending the issuance of the permits?
Yes. Okay. I have a motion second to table this item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to skip item L. Discussion of potential, no, excuse me, I'm going to go ahead and do item L. Consideration authorization to reclassify job title in the county clerk's salary schedule and budget amendments for funds 100-4040. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, I do want to...
Who's going to present this item?
Joe.
Joe? Mr. Rivera? Good morning, sir.
Happy to report to you that our records management fund and our archival fund is almost doubling its collections over last year. So, what we'd like to do first is to approve the new budgets, and I'd like for Martha to make that presentation on the revenues.
The records management fee and the records archival fee has been doubled in the cost that the county clerk can charge. It went up from a fee of $5 to $10. The way the revenue was budgeted, it was budgeted at basically at the same, more or less the same amount as it was last year. That revenue was not doubled, and it would not have had it have been budgeted at the new rate of $10 per case. This is revenue that is restricted for a specific use, so it would not have, it would not have helped general fund in any means, rather, since these are restricted funds. They are, whatever excess is collected in one year that is not spent the next year rolls over as restricted fund balance for the following year. So, these are restricted funds that are dedicated for a specific purpose and for usage for the county clerk and records management and records preservation. I looked at the revenue that has been generated for the past, from calendar year 2011 through present 2013. This year to date, they have approximately, for FY '13, which is January of '13 through September of '13 only, they have $215,465 already generated, and in the other department, they have $222,900. So, in looking at that revenue and in looking at the prior year's history, there is no indication that there will be any decrease in this revenue due to cases not being filed. So, based on that, I am comfortable with projecting an additional $215,000 for Department 4040, and, which is a records management, and in the records archival, I would project an increase of approximately $200,000. I did speak regarding this with Mr. Rivera's staff yesterday, and the information as he is presenting is he is looking to utilize the bulk of these funds in data processing. I explained to them that while it is conceivable that they will probably exceed what I am willing to increase the budget by right now, I do not think that they will use all of the available budget in this fiscal year. We only have nine months left in the year. So, I have spoken to Mr. Rivera this morning as well, and I told him that what we could do is if indications are there that they are going to need additional funds and the revenue is there, then we can address this with the court later on in the county fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One of the things that we've done was that extra funding, if you go to San Benito, we remount completely that, our office over there, and we've used records management money. So, none of this money is coming out of the general fund. One of the things that we'd like to do in conjunction of getting the equipment and the remodeling is to give supplemental pay to the people that are handling the records management duties in the recording office and also in the records management office and the judicial building. So, I pass you the, what we want to do, and it involves less than 1% of the total funding that we are collecting. So, one of the things that I'd like for you to do is to approve the budget that Mrs. Galarza has presented, and also with the new supplemental pay for those employees that handle those duties.
Thank you. Martha?
I would like to point out to the court that the, what I am presenting to the court is the revenue. I am not presenting the operations budget and the utilization of the, of these funds is Mr. Rivera's package. And I would also inform the court that this increase in the fee actually drops back to the, from $10 to $5 in, I believe, in September 2016.
It's a five-year plan.
So, it's only a five-year increase that is approved per the House bill. What will happen between now and then is anybody's guess. You know, they may decide to increase, to keep it at the same rate. However, that is how the act, how the House bill is right now. And also, in the information that Mr. Rivera has provided the court with, there are adjustments on the salary schedule. So, at the time that this fee gets dropped back down, then, since these are salaries that are being paid to these individuals, these increases, or rather, these increased salaries will, in essence, be borne by general fund at the time that the fee drops.
It looks that we do, we will have at least two more budgets before this possible decrease will go into effect, correct? We'll go through two more budget cycles?
Yes, uh-huh.
What is the total impact, Mr. Rivera? The dollar?
About $25,000.
To the salaries?
To the salaries.
Right. Right.
I've got to add that I've never seen a fee subtracted after it's been passed. And if it does, we still have the five dollars that we'll still be recollecting, and most of our work will have been finished.
Being that this is a user fee, I would see the state probably allowing it to continue. If it was going to have a direct impact on a personal pocket of somebody, it could possibly go away. But the way it stands, it looks like it's a pretty good chance that you'll get it again, but let's not worry about it today.
Right. And also, if you look at the other departments that do give supplemental pay, the same thing can be said for them, you know? When you collect forfeiture funds, things of that sort, when that dries up, where do you go?
Yeah, we've had some huge increases.
You either eliminate them or pick them up in general fund.
We've had major increases from many of our departments, Mr. Rivera, from other funds, through forfeiture funds, drug, different types of funds that we've had, so, and we kind of hope and pray that money doesn't go away, because we're going to have a problem if it does, having to absorb that. So what are the...
I can almost guarantee you, commissioners, that we'll have the funding to do whatever we need to do to get it done.
Since the impact is not the general fund and it's a user fee, I move that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item M, discussion and potential action regarding Tyler Technologies and the Odyssey system. Just in time.
Good morning. Last week, we had a special meeting in reference to this, to the same item. And at that meeting, the judge asked that we get together and have a workshop with some folks from Tyler Technologies, as well as the jail staff, RIT staff, and some JP staff, raise some of the issues and the problems that we're facing, and discussing some of the legal aspects or the contractual obligations that Tyler has in providing us a software system. And from that meeting, if you go back to 2008, when we originally, or when the county entered into this agreement to implement Odyssey, the county chose to a lower cost, or a lower cost option of the Odyssey software version. That lower cost had limited customization, and it was something that we would adjust our business practices to the current system that was in place. So a lot of the, it was a basic function of the software system. Yesterday, the jail, the sheriff's department, and JP's, they raised three major issues. And one of them had to do with reports to jail standards. For a while there, the jail was able to submit electronic reports to the Commission on Jail Standards. For whatever reason, that ended. And for the last two or three months, they haven't been able to submit, submit reports. They've been having to work on the issue manually. The issue there is that we haven't even involved Tyler Technologies yet in actual finding a remedy to that situation. So to go ahead and say, well, Tyler didn't, well, they didn't even know about it until yesterday when we discussed it with them.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Why didn't we include them?
Um...
Or at least notify them in a timely manner?
Right. I think our IT staff was trying to see if they can find a remedy to the situation locally before we escalated it to Tyler. I agree with you, it took two months, it's too long to leave them out of the picture. We discussed that with the staff, and that won't happen.
It's kind of hard to point fingers when our problems are self-inflicted.
Right.
Okay.
The second issue having to do with the computerized aided dispatch system, the CAD system. A couple of weeks ago, the CAD system went down, the server went down. But again, they're trying to connect that to Odyssey, and that's a hardware issue, the reason why it went down. We're finding out the battery backups, and the system was improperly shut down, and the battery backups weren't operating correctly to give that support, so hence we, that server went down. The third issue...
That issue is, it's a, you know, third-party software that has nothing to do with Tyler also.
That's correct. The third issue is a major issue, and we're currently trying to work through and see how we can get that remedied. It's the reports that we make to OCA. Our JP's haven't made, haven't been able to conduct the reports. I believe it's been six months since June, they haven't been able to submit reports to OCA. I believe we're probably in some sort of delinquency or violation with that. Part of the issue that was raised yesterday was the financial application aspect of what the JP's do isn't conducive to their operation. They feel that maybe it's more conducive to what the auditor's office does, and they'd like to see some modifications to that. So in looking at the JP issues, I met with Liz Chavez yesterday, she's from JP Flosas' office, and she's willing to step aside from her role there and help RIT staff and work with Tyler to fix these JP issues, so that we can have a uniform process, a standard process moving forward. And I would ask the court, or recommend to the court, currently, we have JP 2-3 staff temporarily housed in two different offices. I'd like to see if we can assign maybe one or two of those individuals to, I believe it's JP 3-1, where Judge Flosas is, to kind of take over some of that workload from Liz, so that she can go ahead and handle and work on these, on these issues for us, so we can get them resolved.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to actually have somebody that runs, that can work with Tyler pretty much as needed, and maybe pull that person, have that RIT person for Tyler? Is she qualified to do that?
I believe so. She's respected among the JP's and their staffs. She understands the business practices there, the JP offices, she understands the technical side. I believe she'd be a great person to work with and help the county establish that process.
The reason I say this, we were warned by the auditor that if we didn't comply in a timely manner, it would cause, I don't know how much, what kind of budget, how it would affect the budget, but it was, it was a decent hit. I remember it wasn't a little bit of money. It could be a pretty significant amount of money that we don't need to be losing, or because we're not up to par.
And by no means, the fix isn't a, she's not going to go work, and then in a week, it's going to be repaired. It's a 45 to 60-day, 60-day fix that we're looking at. But it's a permanent one, but it's something that we need to do. We actually need to dedicate, she can't dedicate the time because of her workload, because something we do need to take into consideration and dedicate to.
We could probably use one of those 2.3 people temporarily, because by the time we get this resolved, hopefully, it'll be budget time again, and then we can look at what we need to do at that particular time.
We're looking to get this resolved before February of next year.
Yeah.
And we won't take up the budget until October.
That's why, and so we still have that open gap between, before a new JP 2.3 would actually be seated in January of 15. So we do have the, we could do that.
Right, and I'd like to see if we can have a subject matter expert in the jail as well to help with the same type of transition, because we're, I mean, we're having the same issues, user issues, communication issues back and forth from Tyler, RIT staff and the jail, there's just a breakdown in communication there. And while I believe that the jail staff is knowledgeable in certain way of doing things, and we've obviously moved away from that way of doing things, and we've implemented a different system, and I think someone that can be able to help us develop the business processes in the jail to help better, so that we can better function and move forward would be a tremendous help.
Is that Gus back there?
Yes.
Gus, good. You know, thank you for being here, and thank you for being at the meeting yesterday. You know, we had a really good meeting yesterday. Commissioner Bambis was there and myself, and a number of folks that are directly impacted. I want to thank Tyler for being there and giving us the PowerPoint presentation that reminded me of what we had done since 2008 to the present. And I think that there's some, maybe not some, but a lot of miscommunication that has occurred historically as to what we've done and where we're going. But I think the commitment from Tyler was there at the meeting. Commissioner, you were there?
Yes, I was.
You know, they are extremely, extremely concerned about making sure that our implementation process gets caught up to date. And I think that at the end of the day, you know, the issues that we have is that there's a system being implemented, and we're utilizing the folks in, whether it's Sally's office, whether it's in the sheriff's office or anywhere else, to implement a new process and at the same time, be responsible for everything that normally is done in the offices. It's like when, I think it was Janie Trevino from the sheriff's office, you know? The sheriff's office expects her to do certain things there, and at the same time, we expect her to implement this new system. Time-wise, it's probably impossible, and the same occurs in the JP's offices. If we have, I think we call these folks subject matter leaders?
Experts, yeah.
Experts, yeah.
Experts, leaders, experts, whatever, you know, in the offices that we can use to facilitate the implementation, both at the jail and at the JP offices. In the case of the JP's, you know, Arnold has mentioned Liz, which is a person that has been kind of up to date and moving the work, and I think she has rapport, you know, she's taken it upon herself to call counties across the state of Texas that are using the same system, getting ideas from them, you know, doing all these things. But if we have like a point person that our local people can go to, so that she can be our liaison to Tyler on issues that need to be taken care of, or if we can use her to help us lead the meetings or do the trainings, that she would be able to do that. In regard to the jail system, Mr. Rayna, is we want to do the same thing with an individual that we could mutually agree with, with you all, to place there in your facility to help implement the process. And I know Arnold has a position in his IT department, he's got some, he doesn't have anyone in it yet, but I would like to, I would like to encourage this court to consider us temporarily doing both of those people as we go through the implementation process, and help facilitate it, and at the same time, help the offices and not put all the burden on each one of the offices to do everything they have to do already, plus something else, you know? So my recommendation to the court would be that we accept Arnold's recommendation for what he wants to do with the JP's, and also to get the other individual, the other IT position filled in conjunction with, in cooperation and agreement with the sheriff, so that, you know, we can give you that support staff there to help facilitate that whole process. If issue comes up, that individual, you know, Janie's doing 20 things, and she told us yesterday, she's doing 20 things at one time. If she calls Tyler, sometimes she's not available to take the call back because she's doing all these other things. And, you know, that one point person would be able to be the liaison and the subject matter expert that, you know, everyone goes to, you know?
Right, and...
One of the big concerns, excuse me, is, and I think it's perfect, that's what we talked about yesterday, but it has to be timely. I don't want the JP office to call, just like a judge, wants the JP office to call, and we don't get back to them for two weeks.
Right.
Or it never got, Tyler never even knew what the problem was. That's been part of the issue also. So hopefully, maybe even your assistant, Arnold, can make sure that the information is getting to IT, and IT is getting the information to Tyler, just kind of close the circle, in other words. To make sure that the information is flowing the way it's supposed to, because that's part of the problem also, that it hasn't been...
There has been a breakdown in communication. We have 10 JP offices doing 10 different things, 10 different ways of doing things, and, you know, they're all feeding into Paul, or they're all calling in, they are maybe calling Tyler as well. I mean, there's different things going on, and we need to simplify it and create a uniform process moving forward.
We can certainly authorize you to do this going forward, but I know Judge Gonzalez would like to say a few words.
I just have a few questions.
Go ahead. Please, please come up.
I've been sending several emails, and I feel like I'm sending them to deaf ears, because I've sent you all so many emails, I've never gotten a response from any one of you. And that concerns me as an elected official. What I feel that you all need to do is you all need to go over there and do a hands-on, and you all need to see what our staff is going through. I'm very honored to see that Judge Canos' people is here. We're continuously trying to work with Judge Trejo's clerks, Judge Canos' clerks, the clerks from San Benito. And yes, we have a lot of communications amongst ourselves, but every piece of communication that we have amongst ourselves, and we send it to you all, is going to deaf ears. My concern is, you know, and I'd like to do a poll here, you know? I'd like to ask you all, when, you know, when your manager comes over and says, you know, sir, or ma'am, I don't think we should buy this Caliche because it's not suitable for the project we're doing, you know, and we're losing taxpayers' monies if we buy this big Caliche for this project. Are you still going to buy it? Absolutely not. And that's what we feel has happened with this program that we have bought. Five point four million dollars that has set these offices behind. My traffic coordinator came to my office yesterday, and he says, you know, Judge, this program has taken us seven years back, not forward at all. We're not seeing any forward at all with y'all's program. I'm sorry. It's a constant daily major concern. Taxpayers' monies are being spent, and monies are not coming in. It's really hard for me to explain to a guy that had just driven in from Laredo, Texas, to pay his ticket, and we have to tell him, sorry, we can't even process your ticket today. I need to know what time span. As an elected official of Cameron County, and you all allowing us to use Cameron County taxpayers' money, I think it's just, what we are asking should not be too much. We are public servants, and we cannot serve the public with this program. We can't. It's taken us so far behind. And, you know, when you're used to working with staff people that have tenured with this county for almost 20 years, and they know their work like the palm of their hands, and they say, Judge, hands up. Ya basta, I can't work with this program because it's not workable for our system to fluctuate or to do the daily routines of our office. It's not helping. Joe, I've cried with Joe, I've told him, Joe, it's not enough for us to do the functions of our office every day. Pat wants to pull her hair out almost every day with Sybil. How the other offices, I'd like for you all to poll the clerks and ask them, point blank, these are the ladies and gentlemen that have to work with it on a daily basis. The outcry's are big, ladies and gentlemen, the outcry's are big by our staff. I'd like to ask Tyler Technology one simple question. Do you all have a full-fledged running Justice for the Peace program? Full-fledged. So why is it not running? Why is it not complete? How can you say yes when we know that it is not complete?
It's not working.
It's not working. When we used that data, they came in with a CD, and they said, if we don't have you up and running in 30 days, we will give Cameron County $5,000. They were up and running in 30 days without any whatsoever problems. Our revenues went up from 250,000, $300,000 to 1.5 million. We're losing funds. We're losing a lot of funds. We're having to tell people at the window, we can't process your cases. I hope that you understand our problems. I hope that, I don't know that having pulling Liz from this office is the magic solution. I really don't. I'd like to know how long it's going to take to have this program up and running to where we can function, do the functions of our office adequately, properly, and according to state standards, because we are in violation of our state standards by six months already. I, as an elected official, do not want to be penalized by the Office of Court Administration. I've trained judges all over the state. I know what systems are out there. I do not, as an elected official, want to be penalized by the Office of Court Administration.
Thank you, Judge. Let me hear from Tyler, give Tyler a chance to respond. Would you like to respond?
Sure.
Come right ahead.
I'm Judge Gonzalez, 3351.
They have a, they have a presentation that you wanted to go.
I know, but I would like to give, you know, she, she came all the way from Orange to say her piece, so I think she's entitled.
My name's Mitchell Spence. I'm, I work for Tyler Technologies. I'm responsible for your post-implementation support, so all your post-implementation, I'm, I'm responsible for. Just a couple of things that, that I want to say, Judge, I am deeply sorry that your clerks are so frustrated and I, and I can, after, after spending some time with them over the last several months. Sorry, can I hear, can you hear me? Okay. After spending some time with them over the last several months, I can understand their frustration. Most of the issues that are involved with JP 5-1 and 5-2 are, fall into several categories. The first one is their conversion issues. Some of the major reasons you're dealing with state reporting issues are issues that were, the data was not converted correctly. Typically, that would be found in the data review that you do as a part of the project. For whatever reason, it was not identified. So now we're in production and it's very difficult and slow a lot of times to fix those issues because you've got lots of cases to update, lots of data to update. And I know it's been very frustrating for your team. The second big challenge with JP 5-1 and 5-2 is the lack of automation. There's a lot of automated tools that, for various reasons, were not turned on. There, our, our, our plan was to have one of our folks onsite at Tyler's expense to go help set up those automations week before last. And that would get you to where the flow of day-to-day operations should improve significantly. That did not happen because of the outage, and I'll be talking about that here in a few minutes. The hope was that after we got that piece done, so the day-to-day operations were cleaned up, then we would move on to the more larger automated pieces like DPS citations, where you can automatically import all your tickets into the system and various things like that. Our, our timeframe that we, we originally documented was, we would be wrapping up the first part of that around now, but we have a, have a delay, so we have someone coming out at Tyler's expense next week, correct? To work with you on the items, to fix some of the auto, the day-to-day automation, things that are causing day-to-day processing to take so many extra steps. Because that's, I mean, it's, it's, it's got to be very painful. And, and our hope would be that the, that the conversion and the day-to-day automation would be fixed around. When, when were, when was your target date for that?
February.
What's, what's the new target date? End of this month. And then we would begin the Phase 2 activities, which would, 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 would take several, you know, a month, a month and a half to get completed. So I know that doesn't satisfy you, Judge, and I, and I don't blame you, but that, that's our response.
If, if you don't mind, are you going to be here for a little bit, Judge, after the meetings where y'all can have a direct one-on-one? Is that, will you be here? Are you going to leave? Judge, we, it's very frustrating even for me being you, just trying to catch up to where we're supposed to be, just to understand. No, but we will, we will continue to work on the issue now. Can you go ahead and make your presentation? We have a couple of other items we've got to get to, so.
Sure. Plug this in, Arnold. So, one, one other item I just wanted to bring up that was at the end of the discussion earlier, which was the, the, the communication between Tyler and Cameron. When, when, one thing that emerged yesterday in the meetings I thought was interesting was that the folks in the jail had told me, they said, you know, that your project team had told us you've got to contact IT to get anything resolved. We can't contact Tyler. And our original contract with, what's that?
Before we want to present, it acknowledges the report or the recommendations that we're making. We will.
Yeah.
Okay, you're going to take it up?
Yes, absolutely, finishes.
So, the original contract we signed with Cameron County was a contract where you had to go.
So, I, I think that, I see where you're going. Agenda item N. M, right? And then, you know, the other one is a presentation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and acknowledge item M and.
And proceed as discussed.
And proceed as discussed.
So move.
Second. So that's getting Arnold to hire somebody? And then moving Rachel over to.
Probably, yes.
Okay, to cover. Okay.
And then we go to A, which is.
And is this going to fix the problem?
He's going to tell us.
He's going to, he's going to, it's going to definitely make significant impact and fix the issue with the JP's.
I like his answer, but I want to hear it from you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to hold you to it, Arnold, so.
Go ahead. I've, I'm committed to making it work. I believe we have a plan in place. We have, I've given my staff a February deadline. That's kind of in line with, with what we're going through, the testing phase of the 2013 version to put into place. By having Liz come on board and to work on this now, we're looking at 45 to 60 days to her to get this JP system up and going, so I feel confident that this is a fix. This will definitely address the issues we're facing in the JP.
And I, I just want to be absolutely certain because I understand Judge Sally has issues, but you know what? All the departments do. I've seen it at the courthouse myself. There's been, I, you know, so many times where, well, Odyssey's down. Oh, I can't check on this. Or it gave us the wrong docket. I mean, I've heard that and I've seen it myself with my own eyes. The jail, same thing. I know there's issues, so I just want to make sure.
Right, and, and those were issues of, when, at the beginning, when the district clerk, the county clerks came on board with Odyssey, the hardware we had in place was sufficient to, to handle that workload. As we started moving forward with the jail and the JP's, we ended up with more users than I guess we had originally anticipated or had the software set up to do. So we had failures, we had system errors, issues of that, of that magnitude. We've since addressed those hardware issues. We've worked with Tyler. They've told us on what we need. I think we've exceeded what was the, the basic recommendations we've had. We're continuing to improve our, our connectivity, our speeds. Our, our computers are being upgraded, our software, our, our network system is upgraded, our backups are in place. We have it up and going to where we need to be, at least on, on the network and the hardware side.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that, because, you know, we don't want to throw more money at something that is not going to work in the end anyway, and I just want to be sure of that. So you're saying this is going to work?
This is going to work.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me, let me, let us, let me acknowledge the, the motion by Commissioner Garza II, by Commissioner Benavides, and then now, now the discussion. That way, okay, so go ahead.
You know, I think that one of the things that has occurred in, you know, it's a matter of like, we, we find the guys from Tyler Technologies to blame or Odyssey to blame on everything. And a lot of the issues we had were our systems issues, our hardware issues. You know, and I hope that you bring the light, some of what was discussed yesterday. Because, you know, when we have 2003 operating software in our offices or 2007 and, you know, I mean, everybody thinks that everybody's updated to the current operating systems, you know. All of a sudden, it, it creates, you know, one doesn't talk to the other. You know, I mean, I like the old Microsoft program in my computer because I kind of learned how to manipulate it. When they updated it to the 10, I says, hey, take that thing out of there, give me the old one back. And I think we're seeing those things occurring. The, you know, network balancers, the servers, I mean, we were operating on antiquated software. Okay?
Right.
And when we add all these users to antiquated software, you know, it doesn't jive. So a lot of the problems were our problems, not necessarily their software problems.
Well, and, and I guess my concern is if this company knows that coming in, well, tell us before we put this in place and you expect it to function at the capacity we say it can, you've got to have this, 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 and this. I mean. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we get this fixed because the hardware thing, that was an expense we hadn't planned this year.
Right.
And we had to scramble to come up with money to do that because that was something that we were going to need, which I don't have a problem with. But by the same token, you know, let's, whatever it is that we need to do, let's do it once and for all so we can get this thing going. Because I don't want to keep throwing patches at something that we need a real fix on.
And I think we're pretty much there. The only other piece was the, the communications pipeline.
Yes.
And that is going to be.
In the next couple of weeks, we should have that.
Taken care of. It's going to increase by.
And, and it's something that.
Sixty-fold or something like that?
And it's something that we need to continue to invest in. Technology's going to continue to change and, and move forward. We hadn't done anything with, we were still working on Windows XP. And they've already moved over, I think it's Windows 10. I, I don't know where they're at now, but there's several, well, Microsoft doesn't even support XP anymore.
Right.
I mean, that's what we were, we were on antiquated.
But part of it is when you have a life cycle of a computer, that computer's life cycle probably is the same, if not less, than the software's.
Right.
So it needs to be handled.
Yeah, it should be. Every three to five years, we should be, you know.
And we had hardware that was 10 years old or older.
That wouldn't support the new software.
I think we had, I think we had computers with the computer that actually made it doesn't exist anymore type of stuff.
And servers and network balancers.
And you're getting that cleaned up?
Yes.
Okay.
All that's been put in place.
We had, we had a motion to. One, one question.
One of the questions that has been brought up to my, and I know that when any of our staff calls Tyler Technology, their, their people that we need to talk to are not like really user-friendly. And it's really hard when I have the gentleman that's at the front window and he has to be with Tyler Technology for an hour and a half to try to fix an issue on the phone. I mean, that's time consumption. And then they hang up because they can't find the solution. They call back in the afternoon, here's Gabriel again for two freaking hours on the phone with these people. My question to them is, was there an assessment prior to you all implicating or implementing, I'm sorry, Tyler Technology into the county system to make sure that the application, you know, were going to be okay? Yes or no?
Well.
It's a yes or no. Was there an assessment done to make sure that when you all were going to implement the Odyssey software program, that it was going to match with the application so that we could be up and running 100%?
For the JP 5?
For all the JP's. You know, you keep eliminate, you keep working on JP 5 and JP 5-1 and 2, but honestly, all the JP's are having problems with you.
Well, with JP 5-1 and 5-2, we recommended, we didn't go off. We didn't fill you ready. So we did do an assessment and we.
Why, why were we eliminated from all the other JP's?
Because the data reviews, the data wasn't, we didn't believe the data reviews had been done, we didn't believe the training, the configuration was ready. We didn't relax.
So would it be safe for me to tell the commissioners point blank that you all just aren't ready? You're not. You're still not ready.
I, I think JP 5-1 and 2 were not ready. They refused to participate in the trainings. They refused to participate with our IT staff.
Well, can I, well, you weren't here when they finally, when we did, when we did participate, they picked up better than some of the other clerks, but because they're knowledgeable people. Is that safe to say? Because you're not, you weren't here.
Okay.
Judge, let's, let's focus on.
But my question remains on the table. And then, you know, my second face of the same question is, you all stated 45 to 60 days. Are we going to get that in writing? Because I feel that as a commissioner's court and you're using taxpayers' money, that we need, we need to make sure that legal gets this in writing. Because if they don't get it in writing and 60 days from down the road, we're still going to be having problems calling your people, having problems with the system, then I believe that you all are breaching the contract with Cameron County. I'll leave it at that.
I have a motion to second item M. To the recommendations by Mr. Flores. All in favor, send them up by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes now to the discussion. An update provided by Tyler Technologies on the status of Odyssey software transition into Odyssey 2013 version. Please.
So, just to finish up the point I was making about the, the partnership. It was unknown to the jail and some of the others that you did have the ability to call Tyler directly. And you guys upgraded your contract several years back to a contract where you can contact us directly. Your subject matter experts, so if you have a power user at the JP's or sheriffs, you, you contractually can now contact us and have that. So I wanted you guys to know that had been some confusion in our partnership and that's why some of the times IT would have it and, and we wouldn't know about it. So I think Arnold and I are trying to work through that and clean that up. I also want to make one other point. When the system isn't implemented correctly and there's problems with the conversion and the implementation, it's very difficult to call support and really work through some of these things. It's, the support channel is expecting your system was configured correctly, converted correctly, and they're going to work with you on day-to-day issues. It's very difficult to call support when you just, you need massive reconfiguration and, and, and conversion. So, I, I firmly believe, Judge, that if we can work through this action plan that we have documented and we have shown to your users and we're having weekly calls with them, if we execute on that plan as a partner together, that those frustrations on those support calls will go away. Because it's, the support calls will be more in the day-to-day line versus these deep, difficult issues. So, with that, with that being said, I'll, what Arnold had asked me to talk about was the status of the outages several weeks back, the hardware upgrade and the, the release, the, the release 2013 plan. So, I'm, I'm going to try not to be very technical in this case, but at a high level, this PowerPoint that's up on the screen shows you at a high level how your infrastructure, your, your servers are set up. And basically, I'm going to use the arrows here, the sheriff's office and JP's and courthouses, they connect to this device called a network load balancer. And what it does is it routes, it routes the tra, it routes and manages the load between these servers so that this server doesn't get too much traffic, this one gets some of it and this one gets some of it and this one gets some of it. And then this switch is kind of the traffic cop. It manages all the, all the information going back and forth. So this is at a high level how, how the, the system is set up. What we found was really two major problems when we did the hardware upgrade. The first one was the switch that controls all that traffic and the network load balancer were not working well together. And it was due to a configuration issue. The second issue was the two database servers, they were not working well together because of configuration issue. So, i-if I was on the court or if I was in the audience, I'd say, why did it take so long to fix? It took almost a week to solve. The first point that I would make is that it was intermittent. We would think we fixed it and a day would go by and we wouldn't have any issues, then we'd have a bunch. And one office would be going really well or one set of PCs would be going really well and then it wouldn't. So we kept thinking that this network load balancer was the problem because we would point some set of users straight to these application servers and it would work. So we thought, okay, something's wrong on that network load balancer. So we'd go a little bit and all of a sudden it would pop up again. And so that was a real challenge. The second thing is, for whatever reason, we, we were, we were really having a hard time connecting to Cameron County from Tyler. Sometimes it was taking 10 minutes to load a page. It was very, very slow going, so a lot of our discussions were over the phone and not where we could actually connect and see what was going on. The third thing was there was a roles and responsibility challenge between Tyler and Cameron IT. Some of these devices, we were expecting Cameron to maintain and the other, Cameron was expecting us to maintain. And so there was a, a delay there on, on that piece. What, what we found was the reason this manifests itself on this hardware upgrade was the network load balance, this is a Microsoft soft, piece of software. And when we upgraded from version 2003 to 2012, which was part of this process, there was major changes in the way Microsoft handled network load balancing and it made it to where these two guys had a hard time talking to each other. They weren't really in agreement. And so there was some additional configuration. We worked with Joe and, and IT to, to configure that to where it would work correctly. The second thing is, is that there was, this configuration issues here was, this was brand-new configuration that, that was implemented as a part of that. So that, that manifested itself there. The, I think the, the last thing that I would say is, you know, when something like this happens, you say, what happened? You know, and why won't it ever happen again? What, what our, what our lessons learned here, the first one was we're going to require any customer that's doing this type of upgrade to do full regre, full testing. This, this was not tested prior to going live. This would have been caught if we would have. This would have been caught if we would have done testing, and the users would have done testing. Now, Tyler did testing and IT did testing, but there weren't any testing done by the users. And so, we're basically did our testing in production, which for this complex an upgrade is a really, really bad idea. The second thing is, is that we need to agree on roles and responsibilities ahead of time, um, with Cameron. Um, you know, w- we need to make sure we understand who's troubleshooting what, and who owns what responsibility throughout the upgrade. Uh, that was unclear. And the last thing is, is we're gonna be on site next time we do something of this significance with Cameron County. Now, uh, just, just to give you a sense, and you may be going, okay, you know, uh, that's great, but when, you know, th- this is, this is something you're only gonna do every four, five, six years. Um, uh, this is, this is something that, you know, about thirty percent of the population of the United States uses Odyssey. Um, about fifty percent of the population of Texas use Odyssey. We do these upgrades quite frequently, and this is one of the worst ones we've had in several years. So, this isn't something that's common. Um, this is not something that, that, uh, uh, should happen again. But it, th- these aren't very frequent. We won't do these but every four or five years. But more importantly, we've got to test.
In defense of the IT department, let me interject one thing, Mr. Spence. In defense of the IT department, I've been a commissioner going on thirteen years or thirteen plus. Every year, we get funding requests, and this is historically goes back thirteen years ago for things that are needed in that department. And usually, the requests are half a million, four hundred thousand, and we give them twenty thousand or twenty-eight thousand. Okay? So, you know, we, we can't say it's totally their fault, because it's, it's the funding that we've provided to them, and it's always like, uh.
Lack thereof.
Yeah. Well, lack thereof, you know? Because I cannot recall till this year, I cannot recall once that they were funded, what they requested and needed to be operable, not to be like, you know, ahead of schedule. So, I just wanna make sure and say that about our IT department, because, you know, all of us point fingers, and we try to figure out what's going on. You know, I don't think, I, I don't think that we've adequately funded that department to be able to operate the sophisticated systems that we're at now at, at this level. I know now maybe we're there, but, you know, from, from internet services to hardware services, we were not. You know, so I think that some of that blame needs to come to us in that regard. And I'll let you proceed.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. And I want to say, Joe and Arnold were tremendous through this process. I mean, we just, we couldn't have, I know, I know it's frustrating when it take, it took a, almost a week to solve, but Joe and, and Arnold were tremendous to work with. I have no complaints about that group. It's just a, it, it is a rema- it was a remarkably complicated problem that Microsoft hasn't documented this conflict between the Cisco router. Um, we don't maintain that Cisco router, so we wouldn't have known.
And it never happened anywhere else?
Hadn't happened anywhere else. We'll be published.
Because they have updated equipment, you know?
We've, we've, we've published, we'll publish this to all of our customers, because we actually found another customer that's having some issues similar to this.
Same router?
That we found out with that switch. As soon as we find out about it, we know, but we don't, we, you know, we don't own the, the, the switch. So, um, when we find out about it, we'll publish it. But we hadn't seen it, there's no way I would have thought that IT could have found it. Uh, the key is, if you test it in advance with your users, this would have, these things get smoked out.
And how long have we had that switch?
We've had that push switch for five years.
Okay. So, basically putting new software into an old.
Switch.
Switch.
Well, if you want to talk, Joe. Um, that push switch is, is still widely popular and very big in the marketplace today. We constantly upgrade it with the new versions of software, and I bring engineers in to tweak it every now and then. This is something that we had no idea was even needed. And we found out right away when we started getting Microsoft and Cisco involved and explaining the problem, and it became an eye-opener really fast.
So, but Tyler never ran into this anywhere else? Okay. So, so that switch is good, and it's still functional, and it gets upgraded. The problem here was putting these two together, it hadn't been done before.
Correct.
Which was not necessarily an equipment issue, it was a.
Configuration.
Configuration issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, uh, the, the other point I just wanted to make briefly is, you know, we were, after the, the jail and the JPs came on, you were seeing very, very slow response times. Uh, you're, you're, because of the load of additional users. Um, we were seeing in, in cases where the jail booking was taking one to two minutes. A lot of people were taking, having, you know, throughout the courthouse, thirty seconds to load a case and that type of thing. Uh, we've gone around and collected some metrics and also called some offices. Uh, we've seen, uh, the caseloads go from thirty seconds to less than two seconds to load a case, um, after this upgrade. Uh, you know, it's one to two minutes to do a jail booking is now five seconds. Um, the receipt journals were taking fifteen minutes to run out, it's five seconds. Um, there's a lot of, there was a lot of script issues and errors that people were getting. And to our knowledge, those have gone away. Um, there may be one or two here and there, but they're not, they're not the sig- the, the, from, from the offices we've talked to, uh, it's not the, the countywide problem it was. So, although this was, although this was painful, uh, this upgrade, uh, it had a big benefit. It, it met the, uh, objective to our knowledge. Um, and of course, if there's any new issues, I think Lieutenant Trevino brought up a new issue about a particular screen that she's working with that we'll look at. Uh, uh, but in general, uh, from what all we know, it met the objective. So, that was really important. And I think it's incredibly frustrating to try to do your job when you click a enter and you wait a minute for something to load. That's absolutely aggravating. And I know that is the, I mean, that's our job one, is to deliver the content quickly. Um, and so, um, that, that, that had a big impact. Um, I guess, and I, and I'm not gonna go through, the next thing that Arnold and the commissioners asked me to talk about was release 2013. Um, there's, I'm just gonna give a high-level overview of where, uh, the benefits of it at a high level, and then the plan to implement it. Um, the, the first thing is, um, I mentioned earlier that about half of Texas uses Odyssey, and about, um, uh, thirty percent of the population of the United States uses Odyssey. Now, you may not care about that, but the truth is, when that many people are paying us maintenance, you're getting all those benefits, all those new features from all over the United States and all over Texas. You're getting those features every year in annual release. All you have to do is pay your maintenance, and you get that feature. So, there's about a hundred and five thousand hours of new development of release thirteen. That's about sixteen point five million in value of, out of what our average programming rate is. So, that's something you just get. Um, the, it, a couple of the major things that, that the, the clerks and the JPs and the clerks would, would be very interested in is, we made a conscious decision back in 2012 to change the way Odyssey's gonna begin to work. Um, one of the, one of the challenges that, uh, we face is there's so many features in there that it's sometimes difficult to know what you're supposed to do next. You know you have to go to the job queue, I have to go here, I have to go here. And some folks would say, hey, that's, that's not user-friendly, or it takes too long to train a new employee. What we're moving to is a concept of more workflow. So, there's a, a clerk or a cashier will have a queue, and work will just be sent to that queue based on the workflow. So, imagine your integrated justice process, where you've got the jails entering information, and the prosecutor does their work, then the clerk, and then the supervision office, and that, that all flows, uh, all through the county. Well, instead of everybody having to know what screen to go to to do all their work, to keep that flow moving, the idea over time is we'll build those queues to where people, when it's your turn, it'll pop into your queue, you'll get an alert, you'll work that, you'll work that issue, then it goes on to the next person's queue and so forth. It's a very important concept, because when the OCA came out and said, hey, all, you know, e-filing's gonna be mandatory, all, all that paper's gonna, it's all gonna come in electronic. So, instead of printing out paper and taking it to each place, now we can do that kind of electronically. So, 2013 is our first step in that direction. It's not all the way there yet. We're gonna really go a lot further with 2014 in that model. But, so that's kind of one of the bigger, uh, things we're doing in 2013 is the concept of, of, of workflow. And that's, step one will be thirteen, and really, 2014 will be a big, uh, next step. So, um, I guess the other area that, that, uh, that we wanted to point out is there is a lot of new functionality for our jail customers in 2013. Uh, there's about a million dollars in, in, uh, new development that was put into thirteen. Uh, it's about seven thousand hours of, of new development. The good news is, a lot of cus- customers are selecting our jail product in Fulton County, uh, which is Atlanta, El Paso, others have gone, you know, Colin have gone live with our jail products. There's a lot more money to, to, to pour back into that product to do new features. And we have a, 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 a pretty robust five-year roadmap, uh, that the jail uses. And just a couple of things that have been hot-button issues out here. Uh, biometrics, which I know has been a real frustration for the jail that we haven't had. That's in 2013. Um, uh, the high-definition cameras, which I know the, the ability to, to, to use those is in 2013. So, I know that, that was, uh, uh, important for, uh, the jail as well in Cameron County. And then, there's, there's a number of others that I can, I'll, I'll send Arnold these slides so you can have access to. I know we don't want to go into each one of these here in court. So, there's a long list of pretty important features that would affect, you know, batch payment processing option, batch warrant processing, things that, uh, uh, all the county would, would benefit from. Um, but, uh, the, the, the trick is, is that those, those features won't just magically get in. You know, the release will come in, and it'll, it'll, it'll be built to where the way you work today works tomorrow. But then, there's a lot of features underlying that you're gonna have to turn on. You're gonna have to look at, you're gonna have to decide, do I wanna change my business process? Is this gonna affect the jail, or the, you know, the clerks? And so, there'll be decisions that need to be made. And I'm very pleased to hear that a steering committee's been developed. That's a great mechanism to, to discuss the, the integrated justice process. Uh, I'm very excited to hear there's, there's subject matter experts that are being assigned to, to represent certain departments, so they can look at the features, they can look at the testing and that type of thing. Uh, because if we work on it really well upfront, then we won't have the types of problems that we're having in some cases post-implementationist release. Um, so, at a, at a high level, um, the, the, the biggest piece that was really slowing us down was the infrastructure was not compatible, uh, the, the underlying, uh, servers and, and Microsoft software. So, that's been upgraded. Um, now, we're, uh, putting the Odyssey release into your test environment, um, and, uh, we're working through that with, with, uh, with your team. Um, there's going to be a kickoff meeting either the be- I think it hasn't been exactly decided yet, but it's either early next week, where we're gonna kick off Monday or Tuesday of next week. Tyler's gonna come back out. We're gonna have the subject matter experts from each office, uh, begin to work on a plan for testing the release and making sure that, uh, uh, we have a good plan, so we don't have another issue like we had several weeks back. Um, and this is, and, and I won't go into, to detail on each of these bullets, uh, because it's probably a little too granular for the court, but I just wanted you to know that it's important to note that, you know, we, we need participation from the offices. If they don't participate, it's gonna come in, and there may be problems. And so, catching that before, um, it goes into production is really important.
Well, if you're not getting participation, you need to let us know.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Um, then we'll, we'll be testing and identifying any issues that have come out from that. Our team will have, will have people that are gonna be coming on site to help with the testing, to help show you how to test, to show what's important to test. Uh, that's gonna be happening in December. Hopefully, we're gonna be, it's gonna be difficult around the holidays, but we're gonna do our best to try to get participation from all the offices through that process. And then the last thing is, in, in late December, we're gonna be looking at some of the new functionality and deciding on what new functionality we want to put in, uh, what was best for Cameron County. Uh, and then upgrade to production, we're talking about best-case January, um, you know, depending on holiday schedules and stuff, you know, maybe February. But that's, that's our, that's our timeline to put in 2013. So, um, with that being said, that's my slides that I hope, uh, addressed what you wanted to cover, but I'd be glad to cover anything else if there was something else I missed or something you want to go deeper on.
This is also gonna include direct filing, the prosecutor?
Direct file, e-charging?
E, e, well, the prosecution filing, we, we were part of the CUC's prosecutor model, direct filing. And Charles Gray told us that Odyssey was gonna be having a component for direct filing. It was part of this new.
In 2013? Well, so we made, we did a major rebuild of, of prosecutor 2000, release 2012. If you're referring to, I think it's e-charging, which is someone can directly file into a prosecutor case.
Right, direct filing.
I don't think that's dependent on 2013, but I need to follow back up with you, Commissioner, on that. I'll, I'll, let me find out. I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay.
Uh, was Charles on the call yesterday?
Yes.
He was the other individual, yeah. He was at the meeting on a, on a, on a call.
Okay.
So, he participated during the whole meeting.
Cause that was my understanding, cause we were part of the CUC's direct filing, the e-filing, if you want to call it. Uh, and then Charles told us that y'all were doing that, and it would be part of the 2013 upgrade.
I'll have to look. I, I know we're doing e-charging. I, I don't think it's dependent on thirteen, because we can deliver a lot of new functionality outside of the release, but I need to find out, Commissioner. I'm just, I'm not educated on that particular one.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I need a motion to acknowledge report.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
Now that Mr. Forbes is out there, you know, I know that we've been looking at the new EMR system for the jail, and in developing the specs for what we're gonna go out for bids, we need to make sure, and we discussed this yesterday briefly, we need to make sure that in the specs, that when we go out, because there's literally tens of, tens, I don't know, maybe a hundred companies or more that provide EMR services, we need to make sure that they are able to integrate, most of them are, but we let it, we let them know that we have Odyssey system in place, and that whatever EMR system they are proposing must integrate with the Odyssey system. Okay? And when you go through the interview process of selecting or whatever, you know, those need to be some of the questions that are made sure and are asked of the individuals that are being looked at to be considered. And, uh, on the EMR services that we had talked about for the jail infirmary, I know that now we're expanding, I hope, to the health department and to the juvenile department to come up with a comprehensive package, which would be the same for everyone.
And I, I did also that not just that they will, that they have, with some, maybe some examples of where they have, that, that they must integrate, not, we think we can do it and we're not sure. Or give us some examples, they've already integrated with Odyssey in some other, um, county or city.
We can do that.
Thank you. Cause that's been the problem in the past, we weren't sure. We want to make sure going forward.
We ask, we ask at the beginning, not at the end.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Motion to acknowledge report?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor, send them by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the regular agenda, item H. No, not yet, uh, because Commissioner Benavides has to, uh, Commissioner Benavides has to leave.
H is a code.
Commissioner, item, item H, consideration action to improve the early voting polling locations for the Democratic primary and the Republican primary elections for March fourth, 2014, and setting poll workers' compensation rates.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Plutin, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you, Chris?
So, we have presented the proposed early voting locations, dates and times as part of your packet. Where would you like to begin?
Uh, the one, the one thing I noticed that wasn't here was last primary, we used, uh, Valley Baptist Hospital was a, uh, I don't know if that was a one-time shot, or that was a special deal, but I know it worked out very well.
That was one of the, Valley Baptist and some of the other hospitals. It's not a one-time deal, it's a presidential election time deal, where with greater turnout, almost double the turnout as gubernatorial years, we deploy more rover teams, of which Valley Baptist, Valley Regional, various hospitals were some of the sites where they'd spend a day or two, and a team would, a team of early vote, uh, poll workers would go from site to site, as it was explained to, to me by staff and my predecessor.
It's, uh, it's unfortunate that we can't do that during these elections also to get more participation. Uh, but obviously, I know it's a budget issue and.
Correct.
Um, the other thing I had, I see Cameron Park is gonna ha- be an early voting site, uh, throughout the early process except for, uh, that some particular Sunday, February twenty-third. They had requested, I had a, I had a call from Sister Phyllis and that group to have that of an actual voting site on election day as a polling spot. I, and their, their note was, their, but their remarks were to me that during the process of the, uh, this past recent election, that their participation was probably, uh, second highest in the county. They have had a tremendous amount of people come out for the, uh, election we just, that just passed. And they would like that to be considered as a regular voting spot, since they have so many people, you know, in that particular. It's, it's not just Cameron Park, it's the surrounding area. surrounding area. Precinct seventy-four is actually a very big precinct.
Commissioner, was a specific, or excuse me, Judge Protim was a specific request that they have a site for Election Day?
Election Day.
Those decisions are made by the parties and the party's chairs.
Okay.
As far as early voting sites, and I'm sure...
Have those been determined already?
The Republican Party has turned in their locations, thirty-one locations, a hundred and two precincts consolidated in the thirty-one locations. Democrat Party has not. I've, I met with the chair yesterday and she intends to turn those in first of next week.
Okay, well, I'll make sure they get in touch with her.
Sure.
Go ahead, Chris, whatever, where you want to start.
Uh, well, anyway, we, uh, what we've done is pretty much, I've, I did look, you know, tying into what you brought up, Judge Protim, at past elections and the patterns. And in the interest of keeping, are trying to keep apples-to-apples comparing this gubernatorial election of next year to the last gubernatorial election of two thousand ten, of which there were about twenty-three, twenty-five thousand total voters in both primaries of March of two thousand ten. We'd like and we hope that it's, it's higher than that this year. But, but trying to, with that turnout in mind and with the fact that the county is responsible for the costs of early voting and staffing and locations and materials, it's that balance, trying to, to get the most bang for our buck, the county buck, for, for the early voting locations, dates and times. That's what we've done and that's what we're presenting here to you. And again, I'm here to entertain any kind of questions, concerns, comments.
Chris, I called you about Santa Rosa and you don't have a Saturday poll there, which I think you'll yield more turnout with a Saturday than you will weekly. Any problem adding a Saturday twenty-second to that Santa Rosa location?
We have no problem adding Saturdays to, and, and if I may, that second sheet of the locations, there, there are, you'll notice, those four locations don't span the two weeks.
Right.
They, there, there are rover teams similar to what we spoke about. There are rover teams for this year. And so in other words, we have a rover team for the North County that ostensibly has, as presented, Santa Rosa has a polling team from Tuesday to Friday, the eighteenth through the twenty-first. And then they would go to Rio Hondo for the second week of early voting, the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. Same thing for, we have a South County roving team, Brownie Road, Tuesday, the eighteenth through Friday, the twenty-first. And then they were to go, as proposed, to UTB for the second week of early voting. We have no problem adding a Saturday to Santa Rosa and Brownie Road. The reason why it's four days for the first week of early voting is that Monday is President's Day. And so we have no, everything's closed. We don't, we don't have voting there.
What if you were to add Saturday for the top three?
Well, we can't add, at Rio Hondo, we can't add a Saturday because early voting, well, ad ends on the twenty-eighth.
I guess you've got the Monday through Friday.
That's correct, that five days. And I mean, we have no problem making it five days for the top two because we will be open. The first page has all our full two-week early voting locations and there's Saturday voting throughout there. The notion that there's more people that would turn out on, on Saturday as opposed to a weekday, you'd think that. It's not the case when, when it backed up with, with turnout numbers. But since we're going to be open, there's no reason why we can't add Saturday to Santa Rosa and say Brownie Road.
One of the other places that I've been asked in my precinct is Santa Maria because they're remote. La Feria has it all week. And they asked me for a Saturday vote. So could you do a Saturday there as well?
Where would we find, we could, but we'd have to find either, we'd have to make some kind of arrangement with an existing team that's covering a site now on that second page, or recreate a whole new team for that, however many days you have in mind.
Well, what, what I was thinking was, the university doesn't have a lot of traffic. And then I believe you said that Brownie Road turnout, early voting had not been very high in the past?
Brownie Road, when it, when, when you talk about turnout, is, is one of the lower ones even amongst that one-week time. Yes, that, that is, that's what the numbers bear out from two thousand ten and two thousand twelve.
And I think if the folks know ahead of time, hey, you're going to get one Saturday in Santa Maria, they're opposed, opposed to Brownie Road. It's a small community that word gets out, they'll all show up to go vote on that Saturday. And especially if you're not getting the turnout you're getting at, at Brownie Road. So I'd like to see if we could use that team in Santa Maria for a one Saturday vote.
Is, is your suggestion then taking what would be a Saturday for Brownie Road and having that team go and set up on that Saturday that would be Brownie Road in Santa Maria?
That's correct.
Okay.
But Brownie Road doesn't have a Saturday.
They don't have one, but he's saying we can add one.
Okay.
Uh, because Santa Rosa, the same thing, they don't have a Saturday. So what we would do is we would add Saturday because they're going to be up and running everywhere else. Correct?
That's correct. Keep in mind also, a number that you can hang your head on as far as cost is about a thousand dollars per day, per location. So when we're talking about first adding two Saturdays, wherever we, we may add them, we're talking about two thousand dollars to the budget for those two days or for that one day at each location that we're adding, or that Saturday at another location. But we're open already.
Or we could, instead of starting Tuesday, start early voting Wednesday. Push it a day back and there's no increase in cost, it's just shifting the day of the vote.
Actually, I think we're required, I mean, by state law, to have, yeah, the early voting must be from the eighteenth through the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
At specific locations?
Well...
Or all locations?
All locations. And, but our main, our office, my office, my department's office is considered the main early voting site. That must have very specific hours.
Sure.
And we even have that open on Sunday.
Do y'all have any problem using that Brownie Road, giving us that Saturday in Santa Maria?
Commissioner Benavides would like to add it. She had to leave to another, she has a teleconference right now and a telephone call, but she did like to, she would like to add Saturday to the Brownie Road site if the commission would approve it.
Saturday voting.
Well, but how many people turned out in that one last time?
I, I'm just...
We're talking historical and the apples-to-apples election, forty-seven, there was a vote, there was a turnout of forty-seven over a four-day period or a, or a four-day period.
Forty-seven people?
Forty-seven people over five days, yes.
So we spent five thousand dollars to yield forty-seven votes?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I know more than forty-seven will show up in Santa Maria. So could we take one of the weekdays out of Brownie Road then and add a Saturday?
It's the will of the court. I mean, we're talking about a team picking up, going to a place, I mean, we're talking about a team setting up three times. Setting up at Brownie Road for some days and then in the middle of the week, if that's the will of the court, they'd set up at Santa Maria and then they'd be coming back to set up again at Brownie Road to end up the week.
Do it either the first day or the last day, you know? Or it'd be just, you wouldn't interrupt...
Well, I mean, I, I bring that up because you said it was a thousand dollars a day.
Absolutely. No, I understand.
In Santa Maria, I know you get a couple hundred votes out on a Saturday as opposed to Brownie Road.
Sure. Again, I think we're talking about two issues, tacking on Saturdays to, at two sites and then determining where are those, how we, then what do we do after that? I guess tacking on a Saturday to Santa Rosa is, if that's what the will of the court is. And then if we add a Saturday somewhere, do we use that Saturday at Santa Maria or do we use it in Brownie Road and then another, some day in Brownie Road that we dedicate to Santa Maria?
I'd make a motion to add Saturday for Santa Rosa and Santa Maria on the twenty-second.
Which is the Saturday.
The Saturday.
Would that include all the other, excepting the other sites plus the salary schedule? Is that, is that supposed to...
And again, that salary schedule is the same. It was just part of the agenda item. It's been the same as previous elections, so not to confuse anyone.
So your motion's a complete issue?
Yes.
You have a motion by Commissioner Sanchez, the second by Commissioner Garza. Any more discussion?
I have a point of order question. Do I need to resubmit these locations or can, with the proposed amendments that have been presented and voted upon here, I can exempt those in the locations?
I think you could move on.
Okay.
Unless there's a statute that says you got to bring them back.
I, I, we can go with that then.
All right.
We're good?
Okay.
And, and Saturday that you would, what time are you running your other places?
Ten to two typically. Again, it is, you'd think more people are off, they're not working. Well, they like staying at home, apparently. They don't like coming to vote on Saturday. It's our lowest performer of the week. So I would, I would say ten to two.
Yeah. Same Saturday schedules.
Okay, so just to, to review, adding Saturdays to Santa Rosa, adding a Saturday that we'd use at Santa Maria in those hours for those, well, would match all the other, the Saturday hours of the rest of the locations, ten to two. Is that correct? Yes, sir. And presumably, and I know we've used a site in Santa Maria before for the election, yeah, we can, we can go ahead and use that.
I have a meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. I'll let her know that you'll be calling her.
Very well. Any other concerns or questions about early voting or the locations, dates and times?
All those in favor, seated by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm sorry.
... Why do you make decisions on the main parking park?
Because he said that the, you're talking about Election Day?
We don't make that decision.
We have to call, I'm, I'm going to call Amber Medina, myself, the chair, the chair of the Democratic Party and ask her to do that before she submits her total next week. They have a meeting tomorrow morning and I'm going to make sure that gets on the agenda to see if they will add precinct seventy-four, but the Commissioners Court doesn't do that, the, the party does.
Are you going to do seventy-four now?
Yes, seventy-four is open completely, every, every day.
To be clear, for early voting, anyone can vote anywhere and one of the early voting sites is Cameron Park.
Yeah, completely.
But I can't decide on the day?
Yep, every day, the, the early voting exists except for the one, the Sunday, the, the last Sunday.
The twenty-third, they're closed.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah. You had a full voting site except for the Election Day and that we'll work on.
And that's by the Democratic Party?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, we have a presentation by Javier on park system.
Morning, Judge Protim, commissioners.
Good morning.
I believe you all have a copy of the report in your, in your backup. I have copies here if you all want, I'm not sure if they're in black and white or they're in color. If you prefer color, I, I can hand one out.
In color?
You want color?
If he's got it, I'll take it.
I'll take one too.
Oh, I filed those anyway, I guess. And then? Give it in black and white?
Overall, we had an increase of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the whole park system. Isla Blanca, we had a decrease of eleven thousand in revenues. Our occupancy for the RVs was the same as last quarter in two thousand twelve. Andy Bowie, excuse me, we had a, a increase of forty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine. Adolf Tom May, we had an increase of two thousand five oh six. Public Beaches, we, we had a decrease of thirty-nine thousand. Community Parks, we had an increase of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Is there any questions on any of the individual parks on revenues? If not, I'll go in.
Anything that needs to be brought to our attention from your point of view, Javier?
Uh, no, sir. The, um, the only thing is, was surprising was our Public Beaches where we had a decrease of thirty-nine thousand. We don't know why we had that, if that was because if we closed down the beaches, this year we've, we've, uh, we've had, we've been experiencing extremely high tides.
Rip tides or high tides.
Right, so we've had to close down the beach, drive-on beach quite a bit, so...
Can you check those, have you checked those daily numbers to see that they, that they pretty much carry, that's why it's down?
I, we can check that.
Yeah, check, if you just check those particular days for every time it happened. That'll give you, should give you pretty close to the number you're looking for. Hopefully.
They kind of went wild closing beaches this year.
Yeah.
Was it you or was it the other department?
Well, no, what happens is...
Did we blame Mr. Barrera?
No, what happens is the, the...
Not here.
The park ranger, he'll make the determination whether it's safe or not. The tides are too high and, and you can't drive on it, we'll, he'll, he'll make that call and then we call emergency management to send out the notice.
Did the sequester have a big impact on Tommy?
It would be after this.
Yeah, it won't show, it won't show up on this one.
It did have a big...
But it will.
I had a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, you know, I mean...
And it will, I mean, and it, and it kind of overflowed into the community there in Oro City, even Riondo.
It sequestered the community.
Yeah.
Stripes.
A lot of the people laid off people for a while because they just, you know, they didn't have the business.
Bat stands and little stores and restaurants.
Maybe that's something that we can, I know in other states, some parks remained open and this is not one that requires, you know, extra funding, I, I think, for, for federal agents, as much as I could tell. So maybe we can work with Congressman Vella and see about anticipating if it happens again that, that we have an out.
Well, we're, we're already in discussions with him. There are some instances in other parts of the United States where U.S. Fish and Wildlife has relinquished the properties to the counties or local municipalities through legislation that will kind of help them not have to worry about those areas and funding and anything else. So we're looking at a potential on legislation so that we can maybe take over totally.
That'd be great. I mean, we just partnered with them on a drain project that we had in my precinct.
That's right.
El Luz del Cielo. And they came out and they were very pleased because now what we have is an area that was dry that now has water in it. So for the migratory birds, it's great and they were really impressed at the way things went. So, I mean, we have, I think, good partnership with them.
Yeah. And, and we're working out, you know, just FYI, we're working out the, it used to be a lease, now they call it a special use permit for Adolf Tom May.
Right-of-way permit.
And, and there's some conditions in that permit and we've asked that if they could include language in there, that if there ever is a government shutdown, that we would continue operation. And so they're, they're reviewing that and also we're creating a management agreement with them and there's conditions in there as well, so...
Great.
In anticipation of more issues.
Yeah. It could happen. I was in DC this week and, you know, now that we're talking about it, Congressman Vella was just amazing at how, how all-in he is with, with all the projects that we have here in South Texas. So while I was there, we, I actually had a couple of meetings with folks that tell me that he's very instrumental in working at, at the challenges we have. So I know his office will work close with you on that.
He's been, he's been there with Tommy Park, which is one little tiny component of the whole scheme of things. And he's had some meetings with U.S. Fish and Wildlife personnel and, you know, he's
But other than that, I mean, there's a couple of, in the very back on our expenditures where we went over, example, Brownie Road, we went over one thousand six sixty-nine. And what that was is that was from our summer program, the extra help. And then the other one was our Public Beaches. We went over twenty-two thousand one seventy-six. And what that was is, was the part-timers, the extra help and the trash. We went over on, on our budget on the, the trash invoices.